Thank you. Next item, please.
Discussion item, thirty minute time limit, graduation ceremonies.
So we have President Barry, we have a couple of guests that are going to pop in here, Mr. Casebolt for this, and Mr. Abe Ahmed, a senior student at Fortson, part of the Student Advisory Council, and Mr. Casebolt, the principal at Edsel Ford, and Mr. Mustenin will also be part of this conversation. As I know the board is aware, we've been having lots of dialogue with students, with our team over the last month, plus really graduation ceremonies. And some of the board trustees, I know Trustee Thorpe, you've joined in some of the meetings with the students, Trustee Moser, Trustee Lane, and actually, Trustee McDonald, you've been at some of the advisory councils. So there's two groups of students that we've been meeting with, and then we've been having discussions with the principals. The other thing that we're doing, just like the Restart Committee, is we're monitoring what's going on across the state and actually nationally. I think we're seeing some ideas that are coming out of other states because their school year regularly in some southern states would end right about this time anyway, in May. So we're seeing different ideas that are being brought forward. David Mustenin came up with an idea, Trustee Thorpe had an idea, I think Trustee McDonald, I've had lots of people sharing ideas. It's been a real nice dialogue. One of the things, I think we've had now two meetings with the Student Council and then Mr. Abe Ahmed's group and the Student Advisory Council. We've probably met now four times, three or four times, I think, since the closure, and we stay in contact as well. So it's kind of different groups that we're listening to. Some of the students, I'll just say, and I'm going to say it, and I've put out many social media posts on this, is that it isn't fair to our students. Let's just say, this whole situation isn't fair, and we wish we could have a, you know, a traditional ceremony. But the reality is, and I think that the students came to that reality at the last maybe meeting and seeing things, is that it likely will not be possible to have a traditional ceremony unless we wanted to really put it off for months. And it didn't seem like that was the favorable method. Some of the ideas that David Mustenin and Jim Thorpe have talked about, and some of the notes have been in the document that I, the ongoing document that I give for the board, is things that I'm starting to hear from my fellow colleagues. It was pretty quiet in the superintendent ranks for quite a while as to what districts were doing, and now these ideas are starting. In fact, David Mustenin and Ms. Hiam Al Cadre all went on a webinar this past Wednesday, and it also talked about legally what you can do and some of the provisions. So that's how, where I'd like to start it with, is maybe allow Mr. Casebolt and Mr. Abe Ahmed just to talk about the process we've been going through. And then I'll have Mr. Mustenin come in after and talk about the webinar and talk about the idea. Again, it's a brainstorm. I think, Abe, I've been pretty clear when I say, okay, these are just ideas because we don't want someone come out of a meeting saying, "We decided," because we did. We had always planned to come to the board and we were dialoguing, we were brainstorming, just as we had to. How can we recognize our students? They deserve to be recognized. How can we do it in a safe manner? And so that's what's been going on, and that is some of the dialogue. I do also feel an obligation as superintendent for Durborn Schools, you know, student safety, number one. And I did ask the students at the last two meetings, because we were starting to hear information that students were just after this, whatever recognition we have or we plan, that students are just going to get together and not social distance. So I want to put it out there publicly that that is not the recommended choice, that it's not safe and is not a good idea. So I asked the students to help get that word out, too. Let's be responsible. Again, we know it's not fair. We know we want to do things to recognize our students, but we also have to be responsible because we're talking about life and death in many situations here. So I was pretty clear with the student group the last time that I asked for their help in getting that message out, as long, you know, as well as I'll be putting that out. And I know the board will help us get that message out along with David and the whole communications department. So I'd like to hand it over to, I'd like to, unless there's any specific questions for me, I'll proceed with going to Mr. Casebolt, who can talk about what he's been discussing with the principals. And I've been in a couple of meetings with them. In fact, we have another meeting scheduled for Wednesday, and then I'll turn it over to Abe Ahmed, the student.
One second. Trustee Pechikov?
I just have one quick question. When I was reading all of the notes, the one piece of the puzzle I really was not seeing, but it may have been there, maybe I just missed it. I know students were involved and administrators were involved, and were their parents involved as well? Who could weigh in on what they were looking for for their students, or no?
We have not had a meeting with the parents, but we did discuss possible surveys. And so we are going to discuss ways to get input. Right now, it's been students and our administration and teachers that have met. But we did discuss, so the Google type survey is something that we are giving consideration, both for students and parents.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you, everyone. Good evening. Hopefully you can hear me all right. It's a pleasure to be here. We've had a lot of conversations about this issue because we all, and I speak for all the high school principals, care deeply for our class of 2020 seniors. We have had numerous, like Dr. Malenko said, we've had numerous conversations with the superintendent, Student Advisory Council, Student Council members. I've had conversations with my Edsel students in person at the food distribution and online. We've had deep conversations at high school forums and idea sharing. Principal Al Cadre has attended meetings at the state. I'm in close contact, weekly meetings with my Downriver principals. I know Principal Martin is also handling the KLAAA principals for information. So what I want to stress most of all is that the three high schools here are working very closely together for our class of 2020 seniors. At the end of all this, I assure you, and I assure the families, and I assure my students, that no one's going to say we didn't do right by the class of 2020. So lots of conversations have been taking place. Like Dr. Malenko said, I think we're at that phase now where we'll involve the parents in some type of a survey. But we've had ongoing conversations about this, and I think that while we can't reveal everything that we're talking about because we're worried about social distancing, I know up on the board that I'm looking at currently, one, two, three, we have seven events planned for them, obviously including some type of graduation, whatever that's going to look like. So we're going to honor them in many ways, and we look forward to that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Casebolt. We'll turn it over to Abe Ahmed and his involvement with the council in our discussions.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for having me on. So I don't think it's a mystery that the vast majority of the class of 2020, the seniors, they already know that we're not going to have a traditional graduation. But the, most of them know that this is only for the purpose of protecting the safety of the greater good. And so that's what's most important here. We can't take the risk of, you know, putting people in situations where they can contract the virus or, you know, give it to someone else. But as Dr. Malenko said, you know, no decisions are being made. However, it is important to have an open dialogue with the students and, you know, the Student Advisory Council and Student Council and the Board of Education because we're dealing with an unprecedented situation here where we're going to be looked at in history because this has never happened before. So we have to do the best we can to make the best decision and hopefully provide an example for future generations if they deal with something like this. And so that's why we have to work together and try to come up with the best alternative solution where, you know, not everyone's going to be satisfied 100%, but we have to do the best we can while protecting the public, while also making sure that we honor our seniors, which they very much deserve to be honored. So thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Trustee Lane?
I would just like to say the fact that you spoke so eloquently and your class is foregoing for your self-sacrificing for the greater good is probably the greatest statement that you guys could make. It's really amazing. I'm so appreciative that you understand the risk here and that you've chosen. I did have some conversations with some parents that I saw in the neighborhood and then some seniors also asking them. And the first thing out of everyone's mouth is, we want to be like everybody else. We want to share what everybody has had. And then when I ask them the question, "At what cost do you want to do that?" Everybody has said to me, as you've just said, Mr. Ahmed, everybody has said, "We don't want to do this at the risk to other people." And that's what's befuddled us all so much with this coronavirus, is it's so unpredictable. We think we understand that it affects older persons, and then we find out that there are children at risk. So the act that you guys have made, and I understand, you know, that there's mixed feelings about it, but that's the hugest statement that you could make. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee McDonald?
I just wanted to add that the Student Advisory Council has been outstanding all year. I've been dealing with them at meetings and their leadership when it comes to diversing dispersing the information that we give them or that they've given, gotten from Dr. Malenko to their individual schools and taking the lead has been outstanding. So I just want to give them just an additional shout out, and this is unprecedented, like everyone said, but it just shows their leadership abilities, and I commend them all.
Trustee Mead, do you have anything to add?
No, I do not.
Okay. Trustee Moser?
Yes, I'd like to thank Dr. Malenko for involving the students in the decision-making process. I think it's very important that we listen to our students. We do, I think, as Ben and I can speak for all of us together, that we want to honor the class of 2020. They do deserve a recognition for all of their efforts that they've done over the years, and that they will graduate with some kind of graduation ceremony that we're still working through. So I appreciate the inclusion of the students. I echo Trustee Pechikov that we include parents in this decision that we bring it together. But I would like to note that we will also have to go by the guidelines that the Department of Education may bring forward and the state may bring forward. I don't think we still know much of those guidelines as far as graduations, but I think the state may present those, and we, I believe by law, we have to follow those guidelines as well.
Thank you. Trustee Pechikov?
Yeah, one thing is, is that I understand that this is an extremely disappointing time for students who had anticipated and looked forward to so many events. I remember my two girls going through their senior year and all of the tributes, either be it a sports banquet or graduation, that created memories for them and their families. One of the reasons why I brought up families was because families are key players in celebrating their students, but they're also the group that is vulnerable to a large gathering. And I so much appreciate the students who are willing to give that up at a time when they want the spotlight on them because they've worked so hard for it. And I just want to remind them that not only are they protecting themselves, they're protecting their younger brothers and sisters as we see this virus change its course and who it attacks. They're protecting their loved ones in their homes as well as the public at large. But I also want to remind them, my girls have gone on to celebrate much greater events in their lives that have stood out even better for them, marriages, birth of children, college graduations. This will not be as disappointing as it is. The only time you will get to celebrate your achievements. You'll go on to find bigger and better achievements that will highlight your lives. And while your 2020 graduation is going to be remembered for something unexpected, unprecedented, and unasked for, I hope that you all find ways to accept our congratulations, as limited as they may be, and move forward to find more exciting ways to celebrate your lives in the future.
Thank you. Trustee Thorpe, anything to add?
Yeah, to all the seniors, personally, I think this stinks for you. And I'm sorry that you're having to go through this. If this was something that we could fix, trust us, we would do it. And if this was something that we thought by putting off, we'd be able to make right by you, we would consider it. But we're in a situation where we don't know how long this would be delayed and want to make sure we give some recognition in a timely manner. So we want to be able to move forward with something before there's a chance for real celebrations possibly down the road.
Thank you. Mr. Casebolt, through your words, I can hear your passion and your care for our students. So I know you said you represent the other two principals. I thank you for that. Also, can't forget about the Early College and the Magnet School, all of our students. And I know the same, the committee's going to be looking into what we can do for our middle schoolers who are moving on and our elementary students who are moving on. Mr. Brahim Ahmed, what could I say? Thank you for your service. It was a pleasure working with you. It was a pleasure working with you the last couple of years. Best wishes to you in your future endeavors. I mean, I know we're going to be watching, looking out for you, and you're going to be going far. And go Warriors! We'll see what the season will look like. Hopefully, it'll be a season, but we'll see. We'll be there looking for you. Dr. Mead?
I feel badly that I said nothing after everybody said so much. It is very important that we honor our students, but I would like to say this. It would be the thing to put right on the top of your resume. You're the class of 2020, and nobody will ever forget you. And they will know immediately what you went through. And it will be a stamp of approval for the rest of your lives. Thank you.
He saved that for last. That's very good. Thank you, Dr. Mead. Yeah, Brahim, I want to thank you and your team, your fellow students. You were great ambassadors between us and the parent with the students. Thank you. Dr. Malenko saw something in you. That's why he appointed you to take the lead. So is there anything else? If not, we're ready to move on. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Trustee Barry, President Barry, are we going to have a presentation by Mr. Mustenin about the, or Dr. Malenko about the proposal? Yeah?
Yeah, we can discuss that, and I'll have David, if that's okay, I'll let David come on. Again, these are just ideas. One thing, David, you can speak to. I know that, you know, some people, one of the reasons why we had to postpone these ceremonies is because legally, and you came out of the webinar, we wouldn't be able to have them under the current dates until I recently made that decision because of all the governor's order. And that was clearly stated in the legal webinar that he went into with the state this past week. I believe that, and I think Mr. Casebolt watched it after, I know Ms. Al Cadre, and I believe the soonest you could do anything, I believe, was to the end of June, if not moving into July, I think. So I'll let David kind of, again, just a brainstorm, but I'll let David go ahead and comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Malenko. Yes, that's true. Just in the webinar that was, Principal Al Cadre and I both attended, put on by the State Superintendent's Association. Following the state, you know, the governor has a very specific plan for reopening the state, and so does the federal government. In following both of those plans, either one, if you picked one or the other, or both of them, really the earliest that you could do any kind of ceremony would be mid-June. And that would not be a traditional, "Let's invite everybody and have a thousand people there." That's not what they were saying. They were saying it could not be until mid-June that you could even attempt to do some type of hybrid type of ceremony with social distancing and all of the other safeguards in place. So I think that really we're looking at something more along the lines of something into July that would really be more realistic as far as a timeline for this. Now, again, everything is up for interpretation as we follow the current, you know, executive orders as they come out, and additional executive orders may come out, you know, further on down the road. So again, I, you know, just want to restate what's been said over and over. These are ideas, and we must, you know, follow the guidelines that are handed down to us from the state and make those guidelines work within our community. So in meeting with the students, and it was part of those meetings with the board members and the students, listening to what the students were saying, taking into consideration the current executive orders that are out there and the mandates that we have to follow from the state, and also our own logistical concerns here in the district because every district has its own logistical concerns and has to look at how they can put something together. So I just kind of took all of those things, put them all together, and put it down onto paper. I had the privilege of working with a great commentator, Fred McLeod, who has now passed away. And we used to work very hard at preparing scripts for Fred, and we'd hand them to him, and he would totally go through them and rewrite them. And the producers would get kind of angry, and they'd say, "Why do we even bother doing this if you're just going to rewrite them?" He said, "No, no, no. You've done the hard part. You've put it all down. Now I'm just tweaking it." So that's all that I did here, is I just took what I was hearing out of these meetings and put it on paper and created some conversation points for now, the board, our principals, and others to now fine-tune and tweak. And one of the main things that the students kind of pointed out that was important to them, and we can find out even more when we do surveys, but the students said they didn't want just a virtual kind of an event, just an event where there's slides on a screen or, you know, pre-recorded videotape of something like that. They wanted some type of interactive event. And so how we can do that with keeping social distancing and keeping safe was part of what went into what I came up with. And so we're talking about kind of a drive-in, kind of a drive-through kind of event. Drive-through food, drive-through Chromebook distribution, that all seems to work kind of well. It's safe. We can keep our distance. It's minimal amount of exposure. So we want to try to keep that theme going. But then the kind of the twist on it would be that the cars would actually drive up, stop. The student and two parents or two guardians would get out of the car with the student, walk through an area, keep social distancing. There would be dignitaries there who would not touch or anything, just verbally congratulate the students, would be a safe distance away from them. And the student would have their picture taken, just like they do now when they have graduation ceremonies. There's a picture taken of them holding their diploma. We could do that exact same thing. They would then move on. The car that dropped them off would then be further down at a pickup area. They would get in that car and drive away. This would prevent anybody from kind of gathering, and it would keep the crowds down. We could time it. We could assign times that people would show up. We could probably move through this. It might take a little bit longer, three-hour period, maybe four. But if you assign times and you assign people to it, then you wouldn't have everybody all showing up at 1:00 in the afternoon. You know, they would show up at designated times. That's just a very brief overview of it. I think I provided a little bit more detail to all the board. And even since then, I know Trustee Thorpe has contacted me, and him and I have discussed how we could do this plan and move it outside so that we could keep that tradition alive, that it would still take place outside. I think people feel safer, too, outside with the current condition rather than being inside of a building.
Yes.
So I think that that would be something that would make it work as well. And I think logistically, we can work through the logistics of how we can get a car in, drop off. They drive around to a designated pickup area. The student walks to that pickup area, and then they're off and they're on their way. It does preserve a lot of those traditions, the cap and gown, walking in the cap and gown, being, having your parents nearby to see that moment and take part in that moment with you, which is also something the student said was very important to them.
How exciting. Thank you, Mr. Mustenin.
Thank you.
I know things are changing daily, so we'll see. We'll see how things work out. I know just 10 days ago, I was receiving phone calls from students and parents, and they're like, "Oh, you already made a decision. Just let us know." I said, "No, we did not make a decision. Last week, the governor made a decision for us." But I know there's a lot of great ideas on the table. That was, you know, that was an amazing plan which you just went over. I'm sure we'll tweak it and we'll go from there. Trustee Lane, you had something to add?
Yeah, I did get a request from one parent that I spoke to. She said, "Please just make a decision. Don't drag it out for forever. We'd just like to know so we can start planning." And then also, I appreciate Trustee Thorpe's suggestion to have it outside. Outside is more beautiful anyways. It's better pictures when you're outside. It's traditional, and it's also a lot safer. We may have to think about that for some classes as well because we know that sunlight and air are good disinfectants. So I'd like to throw that out if we can and then use the plan to walk through the building maybe as an alternate. But if you did it outside, you could also, the students' names could be read over the PA system. You know, and it's usually in the stadium, so that would be a big-time thing. Nice.
Sure. Outside would be great, but we can't forget, we live in Michigan. So.
Look outside right now.
And Trustee Lane, just to, I know I've received some of the same phone calls. The easy thing for us in the administration to do would is to bet and just say, "We're just going to do a virtual graduation and move on." So I've seen some of the districts. We're holding on. We're like, we're waiting. As soon as we get a chance to do something for class of 2020, we're prepared. That's why there's so many options on the table. So I thank the committee and Trustee Thorpe's leadership and Dr. Malenko's leadership on this. So thank you. Unless, Trustee Thorpe?
Trustee Lane brings up a good point about getting something planned. In terms of graduations, we usually approve the dates. If we assume that at our June board meeting, would we be able at that point to give everyone dates as to this is when we hope to have it, and this might be an alternate date pending any further action from the state?
Yes, yeah, I can respond. Thank you, President Barry. Yes, tomorrow, or not tomorrow, I'm sorry, on Wednesday, we have a meeting with the principals to start getting that firmed up. And then we're going to be looking at that survey that we want to do as well. So I would think that by the June board meeting, we would definitely have some dates. And I like the idea of here's the dates that we would plan on, and maybe here's some alternative. I do think that, you know, initially, there was some discussion of, "Do you hold off till like December?" But I don't think that was the favorable option based on the meetings we've had, that we would want to do something this summer, and that's from all the dialogue we've had. Initially, that was on the table, and that was mentioned by, I think, some of the student group and even the principals. But I think we've kind of moving away from that. So we would, I would just let the board know that we would probably be looking at the timelines that David mentioned, you know, whether that be the end of June or probably more likely into July, and then try to firm something up, and then maybe have a backup date, like you mentioned, I think is a good idea. So we can start going in that direction.
A question followed with that, then, would be, while we have to vote for the official dates for the graduations, if we have an idea in the next two or three weeks when we're looking, could we at least share that with people that these are probable dates pending board approval? Just so people can make sure that they've got it on their calendar before things start getting closer in?
It's a good idea. Okay, if there's nothing else, again, thank you, gentlemen, and Madam Secretary, or Mr. Casebolt. Oh, you're just waving by? Okay, have a good evening, sir. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, so Madam Secretary, next item?
Board of Education, business acknowledgement of correspondence.
Anyone? Okay, we'll go to the next item?
Board member, committee, and organization reports.
I know we have a few. Let's start with Trustee McDonald. I know you got a couple to report on.
Yes, I'll start with, there was a finance committee meeting held on Monday, May 4th, Monday, May 4th. Dr. Malenko and Mr. Wall were also in attendance. On the agenda were the state budget updates, different scenarios, long-term view, the process going forward.
long-term view, the process going forward, and possible adjustments of legal fees. Some of that's we've already covered in tonight's meeting. Basically, the three scenarios that we talked about were the best case, the worst case, and the most likely. Understanding or having some kind of understanding of these cases that broadens our understanding of the current crisis, and it also allows some measure of flexibility as the details become more apparent. We may get some clarity after the state's budgeting conference, which is scheduled for May 15. The state is also facing a lot of uncertainty, and there may be an additional revenue conference in August due to delays in tax collection, which the state had agreed to. The district will receive approximately 8.5 million from the CARES Act. And approximate, or the approximate fund balance of 10% to 12% is needed to avoid summertime borrowing, which we've had to do in the past. And so these are just kind of basics. But again, things are so flexible or so up in the air right now, it's kind of hard to have a specific direction to go in. That's why we looked at the three different scenarios. Perhaps we will be back to some sense of stability by the end of calendar year 2022. And what is apparent that we're, is that we are facing budget cuts the remainder of this year, and they will continue into next year. And we're going to continue to monitor the developing situation. I also. Go ahead.
Questions for the Finance Committee? Okay, go ahead, Trustee McDonald, continue, please.
We also had a meeting of the annual superintendent, or we did these annual superintendent's budget, I mean, I'm sorry. We did the annual superintendent's evaluation, and that was conducted using the required M A S B tool. And each individual board member submitted their evaluations. And we also took into consideration recent staff surveys that had been taken. The results were compiled. A closed session, per Dr. Maleko's request, was held with the entire board. And I am pleased to announce that our superintendent, Dr. Glenn Maleko, has been rated highly effective. Congratulations, Dr. Maleko, well done.
Hey! I believe that's it for committee reports. Dr. Mead?
This is relative to the evaluation of the president.
Sure.
Thank you.
We don't want to steal any thunder away from Dr. Maleko. Go ahead, so I continue, so you don't have to continue.
I love his thunder. So thanks to all the board members for submitting their evaluation forms and their comments. On the 13th of May, you will receive the results of your evaluations. And on next Monday night, we'll have a closed session with Mr. Cavalluna after the regular meeting for an evaluation. He requested a closed session. Any questions?
Thank you for the update, Dr. Mead. Next item, Madam Secretary?
Board Member Superintendent Commentary.
I'll just go through the list. Trustee Lane?
I would just say thank you. Last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, and we're all appreciating our teachers, not just our teachers, but every single person that it takes to run a district. The teachers are featured this week, but everyone from the superintendent down to the lunch line people or the playground people. We miss them so much and appreciate them now more than ever. So thank you to everyone.
Trustee McDonald?
Those were my thoughts as well. I want to appreciate it. Say thank you to all the teachers and everyone that's involved in this district. And I just have to say that I am so proud to do my small part to be involved in this district because we are outstanding, we do wonderful things every day. We feed kids, we educate kids, we give them support that's needed, and we just make this community a better place to live.
You know, instead of when people on the spot, I'll just ask, anybody else?
No, I just was.
I'd echo what Trustees McDonald and Lane have said. There's been so many people trying to get so much accomplished in this environment of virtual learning and teachers learning new education systems, and the students also having to learn how to do this. However, we've had a handful of students that decided, or that made bad choices. And their choices didn't just impact their classes or even their schools. They've impacted the whole district and the way we try to provide this education. So I hope that we find a good response to those students, that they know that this is nothing to be trifled with. They're impacting everybody's education, and that no one else even considers making foolish choices that are going to impact everyone else.
Thank you. Trustee Petchikoff?
I was just going to say that now, now we're going to have to classify our parents and/or guardians also as teachers because they've had to take over that responsibility for the last few weeks. But yes, I think that appreciating our entire staff is something that, I don't know how we thank everyone for going the extra mile under these circumstances and the students for putting up with everybody as we've all tried to muddle our way through these extraordinary times. And the stress that it has placed upon families is probably pretty phenomenal. And I just hope that as things subside over the next year, that we will not forget how everyone pulled together to try to support each other during the bad times so that we're prepared to learn from it for the good times.
Very good point, Trustee Petchikoff. But the parents I've been talking to, they're saying, thank you, but no thank you.
Yeah, we don't want, we don't want to do this anymore.
Trustee Moser?
Yeah, absolutely. I'd like to, I thank the teachers every single day and all of the people who work at the schools. Teaching is a noble profession. As I always say, it's the noblest profession. And I salute all of our teachers and all of the people who work at our schools because they do a lot of work. You realize, you realize that when you take their job for a half-day. And I'd like to also thank all of the essential workers who are working, whether you're working at a grocery store to keep things moving or you're working in a hospital as a healthcare worker hero. This pandemic has shown us and made us appreciate all of the different roles that everybody plays in society to help everybody, whether you're a teacher or you're a healthcare worker or you're doing your job. So I thank all of those who are in the front lines. And my hat goes off to them. I say, please be safe, always exercise those social, I call it physical distancing because social distancing is kind of different in my interpretation. But I thank all of them. One thing that I'd like to remind everybody, if you haven't done it, the census is very, very crucial, very important. You can go to the census.gov website to request a code. If you misplace the code somewhere, otherwise you will have some other people coming in and knocking. And we would like to also save them as well and also make ourselves safe. So it's very important that you take those 10 minutes and you fill out the census. It's great for everybody to be counted, and millions of dollars are decided based on the census. So I encourage everybody who hasn't filled out the census to go out and fill it out. And once again, I thank all of the essential workers for their hard work during this pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you for championing the census.
Dr. Mead?
Yeah, I'd just like to say that the highly effective rating that Dr. Maleko received is the highest possible rating that the board can give him. And our district is as good as our superintendent. So I hope everybody in the community understands that this board has total support for this superintendent and that we appreciate his leadership.
Dr. Maleko, do you have any, go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't unmute. Yes, thank you, Dr. Mead, President Berry. And I just want to say that the rating is really a reflection of our entire team. You mentioned the teachers, the service workers, to the food. It's the team philosophy. And so that rating really belongs to the entire school community, and we have a great team. The board is a big part of it, and I appreciate the trust that the board has in me and our team and how we work together so well. We were put to the test the last couple of months, and we stepped up and will continue to be put to the test. So again, I want to thank, thank all of you as board members, leaders of the community. And then my team, obviously, my administrative team, my executives, the cabinet. They really are doing outstanding work, and we really have a great trust that we built for the benefit of the students and for, you know, we have, I have a sign in the background there, and I know you all see that, you know, keep putting students first. So I appreciate all of you. And again, this rating really belongs to the entire school community. So thank you for the highly effective rating and your support.
Thank you. I echo my colleagues' comments regarding our teachers. But in Dearborn, we don't wait for teacher appreciation. We thank our teachers every chance we get. Dr. Maleko, I want to take this opportunity to thank you. The communication the last two, three months has been unbelievably great, to be honest with you. I know the first six to seven weeks, we were talking, my colleagues and I were on the phone pretty much almost every day. I know you were updating us every day. The last few weeks, I think this is, this is why I want to thank you because the document you created, and thank you, Trustee Lane, for that idea. It was a great idea. We can go anytime we want and get the updates that we, you know, we want. We want to see what's going on, what you're doing, what you're, you know, who you're meeting with. So that's very good. And thank you for setting up the small group meetings, too. I think that was very helpful for my colleagues. I think the last couple of weeks, my colleagues missed me. It was like, hey, we're not talking to them anymore. So, but you're welcome to call me anytime with any issues. So I don't think we've had anything, but we have a great superintendent that we go to when we're dealing with things. If there's nothing else, we'll go to the next item, please.
Next item is requests for information and/or future agenda items.
Anybody? I'm not going to go through a roll call, just, Trustee Lane?
I was going to ask about athletics. I'm assuming, Dr. Maleko, that under the current scenarios, most people are thinking that that isn't, that those are not going to occur during the winter term. But thank you for noting that it would be in the, there'll be a subcommittee, you said, in the restart committee, so I appreciate that. Then if I could also just mention that on June 2nd, there will be the Green Tie 50-50 raffle drawing for the Dearborn Education Foundation. The Education Foundation has purchased internet access so far this year for at least 85 families. And considering, I love the U.S. Postal Service. I write letters all the time. And I, and I know how much they're as important now as ever, but they've been slowed down. And kids having access to internet is just so invaluable. And whenever any of us is away from internet these days, we're like swimming. We feel like we're afloat on a sea. So them purchasing internet access is really tremendous for those families. And I want to really thank them. We can all thank them by buying a ticket. One ticket costs $100, and there will be a 50-50 raffle drawing for $25,000 on June 2nd. On June 2nd, it will be broadcast live through, or will be streamed live through Facebook at 5:00. And some of our local favorites like Amr Zahar and Solicitor General Fedwa Hamud will be on there. So I would ask people to buy a ticket before May 25th if they're able to.
Trustee Lane, where are we buying these tickets? Put that information on.
You know, you can get those through the Dearborn Education Foundation. I think it's, there's, I think there's a connection on the website, I'm not sure.
Okay. It sounds like Dr. Maleko wants to join.
Yeah, Joanne Harris can get you set up if you need.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you for that information. Trustee Petchikoff?
I just want to make sure that I have a good understanding, since we're not sure about the startup of the fall school year. But we also know, and I've read in, in what I really do come to rely upon, your little daily updates about Dr. Patterson coming up with some kind of assessment. We know our students are going to have some kind of loss in learning curve. Can we have some kind of report of how we are going to assess depending on what version of school opening we're going to have? Because if we have to rely upon parents managing the assessment in some fashion or another from home with multiple children and accessing some kind of viable way to know where these students are going to be beginning next year, I'd like to really have a good understanding of how we're going to interpret those kinds of results.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
I have one other question. Dr. Maleko, I notice in looking at the personnel changes attached to the board retirements, there seem to be particularly high number of leads of absence lately. And I noticed quite a few of them are bilingual. I was just speculating as to whether it might be people who have just decided that, some of them are extending out their leave. I just wonder whether that might be possibly some of the toll of this pandemic on people or whether it's just a fluke.
I can, yeah, look like that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Next item, Madam Secretary?
Future virtual meeting dates, Tuesday, May 12, 2020. P-12 Policy Committing, 5:00 P.M. Virtual meeting available live for viewing via YouTube Live and Facebook. Monday, May 18, 2020, HFC Meeting, 7:00 P.M. Via video conference, details to be determined. Check online at hfc.edu. Board meeting schedule, Monday, June 1, 2020. People Finance Committee Meeting, 5:30 P.M. Virtual meeting available live for viewing on YouTube and Facebook Live. Finally, Monday, June 8, 2020, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 P.M. Virtual meeting available live for viewing via YouTube, YouTube Live, Facebook Live, and cable channel Comcast Dearborn, Channel 20 and WOW 15.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Unless there are any objections, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Goodbye.